Regular meeting of Sergeant City Council to order, we'll now say the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
My name is Mel Myers, I'm the mayor of the city of Sargent, and I'm glad that you joined us this evening. It is my pleasure to introduce the members of the Sergeant City Council and the staff that are with us today. Mickey Schneider, Cash Tobias, Jerry Sheets, Clint Marsh, Tim Devines, and Gwenda Horton. And we have, in accordance with section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska Revive Statutes, a current copy of the Urban Meetings Act is available for review and is posted on the east wall of the meeting room. We'll now have roll call, roll call?
Schneider?
Yep.
Tobias?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Any items listed on the consent agenda may, by the request of any single council member, be considered as a separate item under the regular agenda section of the agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda by the council?
Suck it.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call?
Tobias?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna switch things around here a little bit, we have a couple visitors with us. First, I think we'll start off with the budget, and we'll open that budget hearing up, if I can find my right place here. So that way when we're done, we can just close it. Where's that at?
Page four? Page four.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Page two.
I don't have the right one, sorry, I'll get there. Oh, mine's on the bottom, okay. The public hearing concerning the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget is now in order. Gwenda, do you wanna say anything about the budget? And then we'll just leave it at that?
The tax asking is a hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. We are below the joint hearing. Our tax asking, our tax asking is point three six something, which is lower than last year. And, um, just budgeted for streets and water, a new, a new mower, and miscellaneous things that may happen, so.
Okay, any comments on that? We'll go ahead and we'll leave it open for now, and then we'll come back and revisit that. Okay, I think Mark has a timeframe, so we're gonna start with you real quick.
Is the public hearing closed?
No.
I object, we can't leave it open.
Yes, we are supposed to leave it open, so go ahead, Mark.
Most of you have seen me here before on this topic, some of you are new to this. I welcome Tim and thank him for his help in his first attempt at going through this book. So every five years, the state, the federal government requires that we review our the op, local emergency operations plan. There's a copy in the city office, there's a copy at the fire department, and there's a copy at the courthouse. There's also a copy on the internet and the state. We are in our five-year review, we're actually a year late, but COVID kinda screwed everybody up and they bumped us back to here, so. I kinda like it, I like being on the year five and zero, it makes it easier for me to remember what's coming up. Tess and I, my office manager, we've gone through this, I did call Tim, we went through the list of everybody who's involved in the city, phone numbers and everything. I believe we got that pretty well up to date, we did not change very much in this at all. Whereas this is a operations plan for emergencies, it is also living on the internet. So we do not recommend putting specific details in this thing. Or if something were to happen and you didn't follow that, you could easily be held accountable to that letter that you wrote in here. This generic template that we get from the state and from the feds meets everything that we are required. Reese, over the years, has done a really good job of helping tweak what we needed here. The fire department gets an opportunity to throw in ten cents on this, and honestly, it's, it didn't change very much from last time, there wasn't any need to change it, your guys' is probably one of the best written. So, all we really need to do is just vote on it. When, tonight, when I leave here, I'm going to Mason City to do the same thing. When we get all eleven of the recognized villages and cities in the county done, Tess and I have to take that to the county board, and they have to approve the whole document. Your guys' is one of the longer ones, but the whole book itself is like fifteen hundred pages. So, those poor seven individuals get to read a lot before that meeting. Where we have to have this done before December, we're trying to get them as much time as they can to read through that whole document. When we get, if you guys approve this and if the county board approves it, they used to send us out a hard copy, they don't do that anymore. They used to send out, in COVID, they decided they were gonna send out thumb drives. They're not doing that anymore. We're gonna get an email saying, hey, the state approves it. So, once that happens, if you guys, if the city would like, Tess and I will print off a hard copy for you guys to put wherever you need it, or, in all honesty, there's nothing wrong with it living on a computer. It's totally up to however you guys wanna do it, we got the paper, we got a printer, we can easily print it if you want us to print it.
Is there a copy of this for the citizens that you're discussing?
On the internet, yes.
No, I'm talking tonight.
Right here, right here, there you go, go ahead, continue.
Honestly, that's, that's about it, unless you guys have any questions.
Do you want a hard copy, both, are there stuff that we have? Got a bunch of those.
We have the books already, I mean, if you put it on the internet, I can, I can print it off, so, yeah, we'll be good.
One of the things you do wanna do when you get the five-year update is take all the old ones, Trev.
Okay.
So that way it doesn't get mistaken, in case we did tweak anything, which honestly, we didn't change anything. So, we did update the list of names and phone numbers, the board members are all current. Tim instead of Reese, Louis instead of Reese, so we got all that pretty well updated, but we didn't, Tim don't get a lot of that, so.
Awesome, well, I move to approve it.
I'll suck it.
Any further discussion among council members? Roll call?
Schneider?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Thank you very much for having me.
Email me a copy?
Yes, I'll email you a copy of this.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so we will go back.
Is there a copy of the resolution for the citizen?
What resolution?
Not at the moment. The resolution was.
I object.
Do you need some help?
No.
Okay.
There you go.
We're gonna go back to the, the TIF, and we're gonna have, Koi, would you like to, to tell us about this and what all that means? And answer some questions that we may have?
Yeah, so, I'm not sure, was this addressed to the last meeting at all?
A little bit, yes, but none of us really understood it, honestly.
Fair, so you guys, do you guys have the application?
Gwenda did, I think, do you have the application? Or no, you didn't get an application?
Yes, I have the application, I didn't bring it with me, but we do have it.
Okay, so the board needs to review that, to, um, the other two. Okay, so, nice to meet you guys. So, there's been an application put forth for what's called an expedited review of a tax increment financing, uh, TIF, uh, project. What that means is essentially is the legislature set for a, set forth a program, so tax increment financing, back up a little bit, tax increment financing, the way that works is a property is valued by the assessor, that evaluation is frozen. Then there's a project that occurs on that that's gonna approved by usually various boards and then on to the city council. That, that project increases the valuation of that property. But what happens is that property valuation is frozen at the lower amount prior to the estimation, prior to the project being done. The increment is whatever that property is worth after the project is completed. If you have a property that's worth ten thousand dollars, you freeze the valuation there, a property, or there's a project that occurs on that, now it's worth a hundred thousand dollars, that ninety thousand dollars is your increment. The way that, the way tax increment financing works is, in exchange for redevelopment or doing that project, they get a portion of the taxes from that increment. So, the taxes that are paid on the ten thousand continue to go to the taxing authorities, so the high schools, your colleges, the community college, it continues to go to the taxing authority. The increment from the ninety thousand, um, the increment from the ninety thousand, that can be divided up several ways. A hundred percent of that can go to the redevelopment, or any percentage of that can go to the redevelopment to help offset the costs of the project on that property. So, that's kind of the overall nuts and bolts of a TIF project generally. Usually a TIF project goes to your CDA, goes to your planning commission, goes back to your CDA, and then it goes up to your city council, or CRA, and then up to your city council. City council finally makes a determination on what, on whether or not to, to finance that, how much to finance, et cetera, and it usually goes to the recommendations of the CRA or the, and the, and the planning commission at that point. The legislature has decided to expedite that review, or allow an expedited review if a city passes a resolution adopting that expedited process. The limits on that are, for residential, there are monetary limits on that for what the property is going to be worth at the end of the day. I can't, as I stand here, I don't recall exactly what those are, I know this one's under it. So, there is a different, a different final project valuation that commercial buildings have to be under, that residential buildings have to be under, and then the historical, historical buildings. What happens when a person requests TIF, the city can then fund that a couple of different ways. The first one is by a bond, they can pass bond measure. The other one is by essentially taking out indebtedness from the redevelopment. What happens is, is they were, the city would, they basically enter into a promissory note with the redevelopment, where the re, the city would pay the redevelopment either up to the certified project costs or fifteen years of the TIF at the desire, or a certain amount of years of the TIF funding at a certain percentage. So, the statute talks about indebtedness and taking out a loan, that's really what that means, and that's how most, most cities that we work with do undertake that indebtedness, they essentially sign a promissory note to the redevelopment saying, hey, we're gonna pay you this back or this, this period of interest. And most cities do it in a way that where, when the redevelopment makes their payment, their prop, pays their property taxes on that property. It goes to the county, obviously, the county assessor then divides that up, they take out what the taxing authorities get, they then take out what the city would get or what the redevelopment's supposed to get, and then that goes to the city, and the city then writes a check to the redevelopment to help repay that indebtedness. That's kind of the way tax increment financing generally works. So, that's, again, that's kind of the overall, the Osbornes have put in a, an application to, I think you might have to help me out on this, but they're redoing this at the hotel.
Yeah.
The hotel, to, kind of, to, to make it a little bit better into, I think apartments, a couple of movie apartments, and then maybe some other commercial uses in there. So, they've submitted that application as well as documents that are, that support their, support the expenses that they've undertaken as part of that. So, they've requested funding from the city council, or through the TIF process, to help reimburse some of those expenses. That's kind of where we stand right now. So, what questions do you guys have that far?
Does it have to be a rated as a, oh, it used to be a big word?
Blighted.
A disadvantaged or a?
Applied, yes, it has to be applied under substandard area that, that the project is taking place in.
And could I ask your name and what you represent, please?
My name's Koi Clark, I've been hired by the city in a limited scope to represent them on the tax increment financing issue.
So, you said that there's increments that we could decide on that?
Yeah.
So, what, what, like distributing those funds, like what other options are there, rather than taking like the hundred percent of that?
Any, any percentage of that, can, the city's able to go from ten percent to a hundred percent of those funds, depending on what the request is, what the funds are for, and what the city believes are the best interest of the project of the community. Typically, I see higher percentages just based on kind of what is needed to undertake, you know, TIF projects and construction, and the way construction sits right now. But any, whatever the, the city deems is appropriate in that case, it also depends on the amount of funds requested. So, if you have a smaller amount of funds requesting, and you want those paid out over a longer period of time, it makes more sense to have a lower percentage, so you do fifteen, twenty, thirty percent of the, the increment taxes. But if you want to kind of push those along and get that, get the indebtedness resolved, then it'll be a hundred, you know, eighty, ninety to a hundred percent of that.
What would be the typical timeframe?
The way, I s, I usually see people do it over fifteen years. It's not very often that I see, that I see municipalities limited time-wise. Honestly, I don't see them limited in, even in percentage very often, usually it's a hundred percent for fifteen years, or whatever the certified project costs sucks, because as soon as we hit that cap, we're done regardless. If you pay it off in two years, you pay it off in ten years, or you never pay it off, if you hit the cap, you're done regardless of what you had in the fifteen-year period.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
I have so many questions, just many, many questions. Okay, so is this for, and I don't know who to look at, is this for now stuff, stuff that's already finished, or stuff that needs to be finished?
So, my understanding is it's in progress right now, is that right?
Well, I haven't done any of those.
Okay.
The, the amount that, it shows how much we've already paid for our payments, and then it shows the total that we're gonna need, and I included that hundred and thirty-five thousand in case that were to be true. So, no, this, that amount is for all the stuff that needs done.
Future. Future stuff, okay. So, the property tax value, and we said we know what the difference is gonna be, we have that number?
Well, I was given evaluations from a gentleman in, came out of Grand Island, I believe it was, and he gave a good and an average, and so I kinda went in the middle. Definitely after this gets going, they will, somebody, there's somebody new, I guess, that they haven't evaluated it, and he said he would probably come and fall, so I don't know what that means.
But so we don't actually have an, we don't have an idea of what that increment?
I mean, I don't know how you can really have an exact.
Well, no, but I just mean, how would you know what the increment was gonna be if you did not know what the increase in the value was gonna, you know? I mean, sort of, and I'm not pointing fingers at you, I just, serious, I don't remember this last meeting twenty years ago when we talked about this.
Well, I mean, and if I had known that I needed to bring that application, and I could run home before I was done with the meeting, and show you the application and also our bids and our, you know, the, the paperwork, I just didn't know I needed to bring that with me. So, so I calcul, I talked to Lana at the Custer County Assessor's Office, and she worked me through those percentages, and it was based off of, I think I based it off of maybe six hundred thousand, um, total. What we are putting into it is gonna be well over nine, um, probably eight fifty, nine hundred thousand, so. But assuming that maybe it would be around there, and then I, you know, she just helped me with the calculations, so.
Koi, I got a question for you.
So, that's how I got, over fifteen years, the tax increment percentages would be around there, but.
I have it up right now, the average could be, was an increase of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, and some change, and then good was about seven hundred and nineteen thousand, some change.
And so I went in the middle of that when I made the calculations, maybe it was five fifty.
So, on the payment side, the building for six thousand two million, it's gonna be worth five hundred thousand in fifteen years, how does a payment plan work throughout the process to get paid back? Do you start with a low increment?
Yeah.
And as it gets more completed, the percentages gets higher, is the way I'm understanding it?
Nope, so the way, the way it works is, so, for example, if you approve this tonight, which I think you looked the application and have that in front of you when you do this, but if you approve this, what happens is the assessor has to go out and assess the property as it is. That value freezes typically for two years, I think on a micro TIF or an expedited review is one year. So, they have one year to complete the project, when that's done, they send a letter to the assessor, the assessor goes out and revalues it, and that's your increment. But that low increment, and what it looks like is valued at about seventeen thousand right now. That seventeen thousand will be consistent throughout the fifteen years, so the taxes on that seventeen thousand is what the taxing authorities will receive, you know, on those taxes. When we come back, it's valued at, you know, four hundred thousand in two years, everything on the seventeen thousand or four hundred thousand is what will be paid back. If you do a hundred percent of the TIF, is what will be paid back to the redevelopment. But as that continues, obviously, you come back in two years, it's worth four hundred thousand, but the value of real estate's not going down. So, in the next, as that grows over ten, fifteen years, four hundred fifty, five hundred thousand, a hundred percent of those taxes that go towards that will be refunded to the redevelopment until they repay the project or until that fifteen years runs out. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we could also get, the developer could get a loan. And, um, just knowing that then we would get reimbursed instead of the city, if that makes sense.
To whatever extent that the city agreed.
Well, actually, it would go from the county to the city, and then the city would have to then give that to us for repayment.
Whatever percentage, whatever percentage.
And then if, so then, if that isn't whatever the amount is that was decided, then we would just have to pay the additional. I mean, it's, it's our, it's not like, right, it's not like they would have to pay.
Right, so if you guys were, the loan, the loan language, I think, is misleading for people who do this, right? Because you guys can get a loan, you can pay it cash, it doesn't matter. The indebtedness is actually, it's gonna be a promissory note from the city to you to pay off this amount for fifteen years. So, that's the loan that the statutes talk about. If you guys wanna get a loan, if you wanna get cash, you have to pay with cash, however, it's entirely up to you. So, the loan itself is actually what the city will be paying you, and that's the loan, not just.
And so if money doesn't actually change hands, they will come in and they will say, we just spent this much money, and then we'll take whatever from that and give it back to them?
So.
From the, from the increment?
From, no, so what'll happen is they'll spend all the money upfront.
So, they have to have it, so we either need to give them a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, or they'll have to get it from a bank?
No, well, yeah, they, you will not give it to them upfront, usually, they'll get it from a bank, or they will pay it in cash.
Okay.
So, they'll pay that in that one-year timeframe after the approval of the TIF.
Okay.
They're gonna complete, they're supposed, they have to complete this project within one year. So, they're gonna pay everything in one year, and then they're either gonna pay the loan back, or they're gonna have their, their own funds to replenish, and then over the next fifteen years, the city's going to be paying, or however long, the city will be paying that money back to them, whatever they spent.
Because we are paying, we still pay for the tax for all of it, if that makes sense. You know, so if it's worth four hundred thousand dollars, we will still pay those taxes, but then we will just pay it to the courthouse or whatever, and then they will, whatever the difference is.
Okay.
Send it back to the city, who will then, if that makes sense.
But that is a very fast timeframe.
Fifteen years.
Well, no, the one to two years to completion, that's really fast. So, what happens if it doesn't get completed? In the timeframe?
That's an excellent question, I don't have the answer to it. Most of the time, these are projects that are usually setting on go. I, I don't have a good answer for it if it doesn't get done within the next two years, statutorily, it is supposed to. Now, there may be, there may be some room there for the city to have a conversation with, with the redevelopment, but it should be substantially completed within, within the next two years.
Is there some representative paperwork for, from TIF for us to take a look at as far as what you're presenting to this council tonight?
I don't, I didn't bring any paperwork with me, and that's what I think it's appropriate for the council to have that, that application in front of them to, to make a decision on it when that, when that occurs.
Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah?
Would, would you say the main benefit of TIF would be the income the business brings in after, what would be the main?
So, yeah, there's, TIF, TIF has a, a huge benefit, there's a bunch of, there's what the, what the business brings in. The main goal of TIF, because these properties do have to be considered blinded with substandard, is to redevelop properties that, that are not where they want, where they need to be or where the city wants them to be. It's to take the, the businesses that have been closed for fifteen years, and one of those broken out of that, it's really gonna cost me more as a redeceiver to put into that business, you know? It doesn't make sense for me to put a hundred thousand dollars worth of money into a building that's gonna be worth seventy-five thousand dollars more than that thing. But it makes sense for the city to do that, so the city looks better and it is a better, a better state that way. That's really the big benefit of TIF, and that's the, the kind of the purpose of it, is to kind of offset those costs so people are redeveloping buildings and lots that don't really make a lot of sense economically to, to do purely from a business cost benefit analysis.
What would be the downfall?
The downfall of approving this?
Yes, versus just a straight one?
So, the downfall to, I mean, the downside to TIF is that that's tax money that isn't going towards the taxing entities. So, the high school isn't getting, you know, that amount, the colleges aren't getting that amount. That's, that's really the downside to, to the TIF funding, and that's what, because that's where the TIF comes from, it comes from what's supposed to be going to the taxing entities.
Or if the project doesn't get completed, right?
However, it doesn't ever finish.
What's that?
If the project doesn't get completed, it hurts too, right?
Right, if the pro, if the project doesn't get completed, that's also a problem.
But if we don't do this, you're definitely not getting, I mean, those tax, they're not gonna get that anyway, if we don't, if we're not taking this on. Also, there is a lodging tax, it sounds like, we have one set up in town, and definitely, this business would bring, hopefully, keep people in town, and also, that lodging tax would be helpful, I would think, to the community.
And there, what'll happen after, if the, if the city council approves this, is will that enter into a contract, the city will allow, is that a mayor chairperson? Is it a mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor, okay, it'll allow the mayor essentially to enter into a redevelopment contract with the Osbornes in this case. And so, if the project doesn't get done, if things aren't getting done where they're supposed to be doing, there is a contractual remedy there to bring a lawsuit, otherwise trying to force a contract to get this, either get it across the road or say, look, you're not getting any TIF funding. So, that's another, or another remedy the city has if it goes sideways.
So, once, if we were to say yes right now, did you say the school has to approve it?
Nope, you guys are, you're it.
We're it.
If you approve it, you approve it. Okay, sorry, someone else said that.
Can they approve without a contract in principle? Can they approve without a contract in front of them?
We're not saying that, she said if. This is a resolution, right?
It, it's a resolution and the contract will be, usually is done at a later date. Um, essentially authorizes the city or the mayor to, to execute the contract.
I object because we didn't have a copy of it while you were making that distinction.
Before I would go any further, I think we should see the contract. And I think we should have an answer about the timeframe and what happens for real. If, if it isn't, and I'm not trying to push them to get it done super, super fast, but obviously there's numbers written in there for a reason. So I would certainly want a couple more pieces of information so that we can at least say, we looked at it and, uh, and really, everybody should have, I don't know that you have to open it up to the whole town to vote on it, but because it does affect future tax benefits for especially our little school, that it's something that everyone should at least have a second to think about and maybe, you know, I, I, I realize it's just supposed to be us, but.
Look, you're, you're the elected officials, so, I mean, you, you are the, you are the city in that regard, so I, the city. You need to do what you need to do representing constituents in that regard.
Do you guys have any questions for me? All right. I think we'll postpone this then and we'll get those from you. And then, um, understand that there's also a need for you guys to get this done, so we will have a special meeting for you, okay? We just need to see that and then we can make a decision on that.
So you don't want me to, you're gonna get?
I think, Gwenda, you have, you have, you have the, the, an application, right?
Yes, I have it.
And you have the paperwork?
Yes.
So if you could, so if you could circulate that to the board?
I will.
I'll get an answer on it to your timeframe, is there, are there any other questions?
I guess I'd add one for either Ann or Quinn or, did, did you submit a business plan to the city with it? Just so they can see the difference in taxes?
Yes, she has completed all the paperwork needed for this TIP project.
Is, is there a business plan?
Yes.
I had a business plan, but that wasn't requested.
So, yeah, so the, the micro TIP is put out, is that, or the expedited TIP is put out, the paperwork is essentially a one-page sheet that identifies what the taxes and what the valuation is, what it's expected to be and, um, kind of what the expected project costs on. The application doesn't ask for this, I asked for this, after I received the application, I asked, uh, the redevelopers in this case to submit additional supporting documentation to the city have, that in front of them that they made the decision. So that's been submitted, uh, to the, to the city, so that they can circulate.
Um, how lo, how soon can you, um, get that to Gwenda? As far as, do you think you can get her the information about if it, the project, is it completed?
And it might, it might be two years on the micro TIP, I, I'm not sure off the top of my head. Uh, I think there's still maybe a concern there.
My concern is what if it's not finished in two years? Bless you, a stipulation that said it has to be finished, what happens if it's not? I mean, that's my concern.
Yeah, so I know the, the concerns, that's sort of the timeframe, but what happens if, I probably two weeks, the city will have a meeting in the next two weeks.
Well, I would just, I mean, the sooner you could get it to us and figure out what that is, the better so that we can get this rolling for them because they've already waited plenty long enough on us, we need to, we need to do something for them. So if we could even have another meeting this week, we could do that, like, as soon as possible, I would like you to get that to her. If that, if that would work for you.
I will send that to Gwenda and, uh, she can circulate it before then.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Is this available to people that have already started a project as in five, six, seven years? Or is it available only to current projects that are on the go, ready to be done?
Um, so it has to fall in with, within a certain category of project, um, but it, it's not available for funds that have already been expended with a few exceptions, so if a project's been started, it's only available going from expenses going forward.
So I, of course, have a building that we started, of course, the hotel's been working on theirs for seven years, is that available for either of them?
It's, it's available, but it's available, go ahead. All right, I will get that information if there's any other questions for me.
Okay, no, I appreciate you and your time and coming up here, that's great, thank you very much. So we will postpone, um, on making a decision on that. Can I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion, second.
Okay. Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Tobias?
Yes.
My fault. Sheets?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay. Fifth item is to approve or deny the public coming for the final tax, but we don't wanna do that one yet, do we? Do you want to do?
Thank you.
Great question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's the, wanna discuss the?
Page eight?
The sewer, the water and sewer rates?
Understood.
Do either one, you wanna tell them what, what you're thinking as far as the increase of the rates on those?
Sure. Tim and I were talking about what the rates were and instead of having things go up five bucks, you know, in five years, we, as consumers and people thought that it would be easier if a dollar or half a cent and so. Um, and then especially with water rates and, or with the price of getting materials and the talk of new water lines, we upped it from a dollar for the customer charge to eighty, to twenty-eight dollars and then we upped it like five cents?
Three cents.
Three cents?
Yeah.
On, um, per thousand gallons usage and then we upped it fifty cents for the next year and two cents later in the water usage. Um, we upped, I upped it the same amount for the people at, that live out of town, a dollar and the three cents. And then, um, we readjusted sewer rates, putting them up some too. I think putting them up a dollar on the service charge and, and then three cents on the, the water. Three dollars per thousand water usage, so on that.
We, we thought maybe it'd be a little easier instead of hitting a five-dollar hit, five-dollar hit, five-dollar hit for every year. It's been about three or four years since we had a water study done, a rain study, so. Gwenda and I talked about it, so we just, we're doing a dollar bump. We can absorb that, I think most people can absorb a dollar, and you can absorb three cents, so. We'll just see what it does next year, see what we're making out of it, so.
I think it's important if we're gonna work on the streets and everything else, so.
You know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna kill ya, you know?
Yep, gotta have money. Anybody wanna make a motion on that?
Do I need to read the ordinance?
Well.
We have to make a motion to prove that, right?
Well, we have to introduce somebody.
I introduce, I introduce ordinance five forty-one.
Ordinance five forty-one, an ordinance to establish a new schedule of rates for water consumption and sewer use in the city of Sargent to repeal and replace ordinance number five twenty-nine and to provide for effective date for this ordinance and to provide for publication.
I move that the statutory law requiring reading of ordinances on three successive days be suspended. That ordinance five forty-one be read by number only and then placed on final passage.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Tobias?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Ordinance five fifty, five hundred and forty-one?
I move that five forty-one be passed, approved and published as provided by law.
I second that as well.
Any further discussion among the council members? Okay, the question before the council is, shall the ordinance number five forty-one be passed and adopted? Roll call.
Marsh?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
I declare ordinance number five forty-one duly adopted. Okay. Now, um, discussion of the city roll-off and the rates for that. Like to change that and make a new ordinance for that as well?
I introduce ordinance five forty.
What did, what did you decide, would you guys decide to raise the rates to?
Just a dollar.
Okay.
One more dollar. If you look on your expenditure deal here, what we spent last month for roll-off, not even coming close. Sixteen hundred twenty dollars for the roll-off, not even making that. We get two, three, four of them a month, a week, you know, through the month, so we're not, it's not getting anywhere, so. It's a good deal, keeps a lot of crap out of town, I've, you know, so, I think we should say we should have a dollar on that.
Didn't one, we figured that up?
It's like five hundred and seventy bucks or something if they have.
Yeah, that, that's all we're getting from everybody's bill, it's like five hundred and seven dollars to go towards that. So we're not nearly getting enough money to cover this.
So, yeah, I think that, I think we should have upped that dollar on that also, so.
All right, we can go. Okay, the introduction of ordinance is now in order.
I introduce ordinance five forty-two.
Ordinance number five hundred and forty-two, an ordinance of the city of Sargent, Custer County, Nebraska, establishing roll-off rates for residential customers, repeal, repealing ordinance number five oh six and providing for publication and effective date.
I move that the statutory law requiring reading of ordinances of three successive days be suspended, that ordinance five forty-two be read by the number only and then placed on a final passage.
I second it.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Ordinance number five hundred and forty-two.
I move that ordinance five forty-two be passed, approved and published by, provided by law. I'll second.
Any further discussion among the council members?
Nope.
The question before the council is, shall ordinance number five forty-two be passed and adopted? Roll call.
Marsh?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
I declare ordinance number five forty-two duly adopted. Excuse me.
Need our cough drop.
Need to be throat at this point, okay. Resolution twenty twenty-five, okay, is this, what's the annual certificate of compliance program?
It just approves the council to let the mayor sign the annual compliance of, for the streets, this is for streets so that we can continue getting our highway allocation funds and that we, um, that we are in their annual certification program, that we do their one and six-year, you know, um, one and six-year audit and planning.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Tobias?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
New water lines and street on Fifth Street. Tim?
That or planning, we had discussed about Fifth Street and some mains on it. Fifth Street's in bad shape, needs to be repaved, but while you're in there, you might as well be replacing the water mains, service lines, fire irons. So we've got some funds from FEMA we can use for to defray the costs, so. You'll probably get old Larry to steal and, you know, see what we do go forward, what's gonna cost, you know? Get to have a cost analysis, I suppose, done with it, and see where it lands. I, you know, that's all I really can say about, you know, we just gotta find out what's gonna run us, what's it gonna cost. Maines and, I know the fire irons are expensive, we bought two within the last couple of years and so, I mean, they're expensive. I know there, there's about five, six fire irons on that, two blocks in there that need to be replaced, so. Plus the fact that, I don't know, up by the school, there's a two-inch water main that goes across the street right there by Deb England's and it feeds all those people on that side of the street. They don't, they're not on the main, they're on a little two-inch main from back in the day. So it needs to be eliminated, you know, just get them out of good main and get some good water back to them. That's, brought, brought that sampling at night, so. I did go flush the mains on it, it helped, it helped, I think, so, but as far as that street though, I think we need to look at it.
What do you do to keep providing water to them while that's happening?
Do you, they, you stay on it and those, eventually just switch you over.
Okay.
But the line that, when they put a new line in, it has to pass. I'm gonna have to chlorinate and that, right, then I've gotta, the line's gotta be clear. Then you can get chlorate or search them out, clean out the line, and then I've gotta run a water sample off of them. And that water sample has to pass, you gotta keep doing it till it passes, so.
And that's before anyone's hooked up to it?
Basically, yeah.
Gotcha.
ORD had a hard time, or north, north of, gets water from ORD. They're like nine miles or, and they had quite a time getting clean water, so. We'll see what happens, but you know, if, if it goes that route, so, a lot of work on it, a lot of sampling to get it to pass, but.
And I think the idea of this is what, to start maybe having him come up March, April, so we're ready to roll by May?
See what's, yeah, have, you know, get, looking at it, see what's gonna run us, we didn't have to get estimates or bids on everything anyway, you know, so. The bids out for, I, that's kind of Larry's end.
Okay.
So.
Maybe sooner than that, so that he had more answers. But would it just be like so many blocks?
It'd be like, from the school to main, that's what I'm thinking, about three blocks there. Cause I, there's a nice main out there on the, right by the corner of Mix Place, so tie that all together and see what happens.
Perfect.
And then that way too, since we're getting to the lead copper rule, which we're, we gotta have our stuff identified by twenty twenty-seven. If we get that done, that whole line will be done. We'll have our lead out of there, we got lead or copper or whatever in that line, I don't know what's even up through there, I have no idea, so. So I'll just maybe just talk to Larry, get Larry started on it all and see what's gonna run us.
That's a great idea, I guess sooner we start, the better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody wanna make a motion on that?
I guess I move to go on working towards Fifth Street project, contacting an engineer.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Okay. Proceed declaring five oh two West Main an unsafe building. Any comments on that?
May I comment?
Not at this time.
Being silent in the building, you're not gonna let me make any comments.
No, go ahead, anybody have any comments?
Well, after reading the letter or the, from Kevin Petros, um, from Miller and Associates, um, he did document a fair amount of things that are not well and stated at the end that, um, it does not seem likely that saving the structure would be economically viable as it has some very old damage, um, some attempts at covering up some things, but I could read the whole thing, it's about three pages long. But, um, lots of words from an engineer, um, and he just, he felt that it was not going to be possible to fix it in any financially feasible way and had some photos and just some words about the quality of the building as it stands currently after years of, you know, weathering and things going unfixed, so.
Again, may I comment on the condition and his report, Mr. Mayor?
Jerry, anybody have anything?
I don't have any, I move to proceed.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Tobias?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that was the last item, we go back to the water, is that right? Or the?
The budget.
The budget. No water, we're done with the water. No water, we're done with the water. Does anybody have anything that they want to say on the budget before we close that out? Okay, the public hearing for the twenty, twenty twenty-five, or twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget is now closed.
Page five, right after the whole book.
Oh, I went one too far, didn't I? Five forty.
You gotta go past five, then you find the view five.
Yeah, it's five forty.
Five forty?
Yep.
Yep.
All right, so I approve, uh, ordinance number five forty. The introduction of the ordinance, ordinances is now in order.
I'll introduce ordinance five forty.
Ordinance number five hundred and forty, an ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide, to provide for an effective date and for publication in pamphlet form.
I move that the statutory law requiring reading of ordinances on three successive days be suspended, that ordinance five forty be read by number only and placed on final passage.
I'll second.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Sheets?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Ordinance number five hundred and forty.
I move that ordinance five forty be passed, approved, and published as provided by law.
Second.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
The question before the council is, shall ordinance number five forty be passed and adopted? Roll call.
Tobias?
Yes.
My, Schneider?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
I declare ordinance number five forty duly adopted. Okay, number five is a public hearing for the final tax request and adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven. And this one is for our property tax, is that what?
Yes.
So, everybody understands what it's for?
Yeah, it's, um, it's the division of the tax request of a hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. So, much goes to the general fund, so much to the street, and then so much to the park. So, it's just divided out.
The public hearing concerning the final tax request is now in order. Is there additional comments concerning the final tax request? The public hearing for the final tax request is now closed.
I introduce resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven, approving the final tax request and move for its adoption.
Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
A second? I didn't hear a second. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I didn't say it.
You nodded, right? Has a head nod.
Go ahead, roll call.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Should we do the water and sewer rates? I think we're good, aren't we?
Nope.
Good boy.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, it's not your fault, but I don't think I have.
Yeah, you just gotta keep going, she shoved it, it's, she updated the, it was an error.
Okay, so I gotta, this one. Approve or deny moving money from the utility to the municipal to the, to zero out accounts.
The auditors have suggested in the past couple of years that we, they don't like negative balances, the state doesn't like negative balances. So, um, I figured about a hundred and twenty-four thousand will take care of the parks. And so, um, I didn't zero out the police, and I didn't zero out housing because I'm hoping that we can move from the housing rehab to the disaster house, housing to settle that up since they're both CDBG accounts.
Okay.
And it was really nice to see that the park didn't need as much this year as last year.
It looks super nice, Jerry. Okay. Oh, you must have put it in there.
I stuck it in there, yeah. It's loose.
All right, any motion for that?
I move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion among council members? Roll call.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Is this the one I'm supposed to have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, and as discussion, it's approver deny, I don't really think there's anything to approver deny. It was requested that expenses paid for Mark Cook's lawsuit and other, somebody wanted to know that information. Gwenda, do you have that information?
Up until today's date, the total has been, and this started in April twenty-first of two thousand and eleven, the city has paid forty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents for lawsuits, for attorney fees, for engineers, and for, um, other expenses with our, with the lawsuits that Mark Cook has brought against the city. None of that includes wages, time spent finding different material for these lawsuits. These are just all attorney fees and engineer fees.
Okay, thank you. Um, electric chargers for the vehicles, can I talk about that with the Custer County?
Did you make no roll call vote, I'm making rejection, I'm required due by state statute?
Didn't vote on anything.
That's right, and it says on the agenda that you were going to?
Go ahead. Chargers?
We, I sent April, we've been talking to April Gross a little bit. So, we just need to identify a location for the charger that takes the longest time to charge. And then, once we decide on a location and tell them, their engineer comes out and investigates it to see whether or not it is suitable. They will pour the cement and do the prepping for the area, and then the, we need, as a city, need to decide what we want to charge them for rent for this particular spot.
So, this isn't about signing a contract?
No.
This is about saying, we like this lot a lot over here.
Yeah, she said, basically what she said, she sends this letter, they, they want a little more organizational type thing, you know, we got a spot picked, we're gonna use over here, we'll just tell them, they'll come in, send their engineer in, take a look at it, cause I've got three phases over here on this end of town anyway, that's what you're gonna have to require, and see if it's all feasible for them to put it there.
Okay.
If that goes, then I don't know, it's up to you, you know, to you people to decide a kind of, a charge for, rental for them.
Okay. But we don't really need to decide that until they say, yeah, that's gonna work, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. An example is, um, that for charges them three hundred bucks a month. For a charger.
Or using it there.
Yeah.
You know, that would be out of line either, you know, so. We can have enough a month.
Right.
So.
Okay, do we, everybody agreed that we'll go ahead and further this and have them?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Don't want no more details.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all in agreeance that we're going to have somebody come and look at that and see if we're gonna go forward. Okay?
Are you making a roll call vote?
Go ahead.
Um, I move to, um, move forward sending the location of the lot next door here, which I don't know the name of, address, I apologize. Boarding that on so that, um, Custer Public can do their studies on it.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion among the council members? Your roll call.
Marsh?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Okay, this is, um, again, not really necessarily an approver deny. We have had an application for a maintenance person. I think that we should set up times for interviews for that. I don't know if we wanna set a timeframe. Listed again, listed again, do we wanna, do we wanna list, like, give it a timeframe and tell him, the applicant? Do we wanna tell them, like, in thirty days we'll let you know? As far as, like, setting up a time? So that we, if we have more applicants, we can do everything at one time rather than just?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, okay. So, let's, let's put that in the paper for, for a maintenance person?
Okay, we'll do that again.
And then, right, and then we'll let the applicant know that we're gonna give it thirty days for some more so that we can do it all at one time, and?
Yes.
That sound good? Okay?
Are you gonna make a roll call vote on? I object, it's on the agenda, you're not making a roll call vote. I have a requirement by state statute to do so, thank you.
Have I finished? I don't think so. Okay, so, everybody agree?
Agreed.
Okay, go ahead. Wanna make a motion, or that's what we're gonna do?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to put that in the paper.
Thank you. Any further discussion among the council members? Roll call.
Sheets?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Tobias?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Did you nod again, Jerry, and I just didn't hear?
No, I said, yeah.
Okay.
Nobody listens to me anyway.
Put some marbles in there.
Howdy, howdy, hey.
I'm sorry.
You're good, it's all right.
I'm sorry.
I'm way down here this time.
Okay, I think that we?
I'll speak up next time.
We covered all of that, right? Okay, so supervisor reports, Gwenda?
Can I use the restroom?
Yes, yes.
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
Use me.
Do you care if it goes?
As long as you don't mind if I miss a little bit of it.
Good.
Getting a budget out and getting it in the paper, um, utility bills like normal. Contacted Larry and Megan after we had our workshop and to let them know that, you know, we're gonna be hollering and wanting some, helping them, want them to help us find some grants and stuff. Just normal stuff, I guess, I'm sorry. There was a lot in this thing to get together, talking to April. I was chocked with, um, Mr. Remke emailed me on Friday afternoon, Friday morning to say, hey, I want on the agenda. So, it was like, oh, okay, I, you know, I didn't know it was that time already, so.
And do you allow others on the agenda by Friday?
Tim?
I, uh, gonna do some electrical work next week, replace a couple of poles behind Chandler Larson's, they're in really bad shape. The power be up by, more than, about a day, got a lot of work to do back there. And then they're hard to get to.
Are you gonna let all of them know?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not, I actually just shut them off and don't worry about it.
Like a day ahead of time.
I, I went through, I went through and I've talked to pretty much everybody except for, like, the L J name is on the.
Okay.
I've talked to pretty much everybody, talked to Kathy, gotta cut some trees out of the lines when we get to it, on the poles, so. Get that done. Like, you want concrete poured, places on these alleys, Frosty's House, that, those there, and by, uh, Lord Falcon's rental, up there on Eta Street, both on Eta Street. Approaching the alleys, I'd get those done, so. I gotta generate one more time. We didn't meet our capacity demand, our purchase agreement, so Friday, it's supposed to be ninety-one degrees, I'm gonna generate. Start about new, that's a one-hour test, see if I can't get it moved up a little bit. Mister Chris wasn't happy with it. But they, we put out eight hundred and sixty-four kilowatts, that's what we're supposed to meet, they take a station charge off of that. So, I actually need to run it, and it was below what we were generating. So, anyway, I talked to, he called me today, and I talked to him, and he says, even if you want to run the four-cylinder some more and get that up so we get a little bit more money, which I'll run it, get a little higher. But they keep taking these, I read the contract, I didn't see nothing about a station charge in there, so I'm gonna have to have a little chat with them what this station charge is, because Gwenda had it on a piece of paper, did you have it on a document, they showed the station charge like a hundred and twenty kilowatts off of it or something?
On that report that I have to send at the end of the month, it show, she, I fill it out.
Yeah.
I don't do it correctly, she corrects it, sends it back to me.
Yeah, so.
And then that shows that station charge.
And I don't, I have, I have not figured out what that is yet, but anyway, so, we gotta generate a little higher to meet their capacity, what they set the benchmark at. So, Friday, it's gotta be eighty-six degrees and rising, so, put it under load, but that's, hopefully it's more money, so.
Hopefully.
Yep.
They explained to me the station charge is the power that the switchgear consumes. That, that's it.
Yeah.
What the switchgear consumes, it's not going to the homes. And it's such a, it's such a minute amount that it's, you know, it's hard to calculate.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I, when he told me I didn't reach it, I should've. I was re, I was using our new meters.
You gotta go over and reach the station charge.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just, it's, that's, so, anyway, I guess I know what it is now, so. It's, it's unbelievable, so.
Thank you, Tim.
Yep.
Okay, Mick?
We had our regular monthly meeting on, uh, August twenty-first in, in, uh, Public Community Center. I wonder, was it about that a little bit, that sometimes things just go on, and I assume people know, and maybe they don't. We used to have all, have our meetings at the landfill, and we have a meeting room there. It went COVID, hey man? Then we had to have ten feet between all of the board members in those rooms, and we went out and shopped. And in January and February, we didn't have any heat out there. And in January and February, there were two of the older gentlemen, and we'll go unnamed, who actually had trouble standing up and getting back to their camp. And so, one of them was a gentleman from Alberta, and he said, why? Can we just have these things at the Alberta Community Center, for it's cool and summer and warm in the winter? So, that's what we do now. And that's the reason we don't meet at the landfill, there's a meeting room, but we just, we just like it at the, at the Community Center in Alberta, and it works out really well for us. We, uh, we did get a, a fire suppression system put on that boom egg, and it is functional and working and we're, you know, we're just relieved that it is safe. They had a big fire from a laptop that didn't get found, and they ran over it with a boom egg and set it on fire, took six hours to get it out. And it was just quite a ordeal, so. I just can't emphasize enough about your batteries to properly dispose them. And no, please don't throw them in the trash. We got sixteen thousand five hundred grand for three roll-offs to put our iron recyclable stuff in, and then we'll pay forty-five hundred dollars in addition to that sixteen thousand five hundred to pay for those. So, I was happy to, and, and the building is coming along, they're, they're, uh, getting the walls and the structure up, and it'll probably be done, we hope, by the end of October, but, you know, things happen. And then there was one other thing that I did wanna do, and I hate to take up too much of your time, but I think this is important. This, this is a list of the communities and the people who, who are in this landfill association. And what you'll see as we go through this is that ninety-eight percent of them are east and southeast of here. Now, we have Garfield County and the Spanish Jeffries, Howard County, Kathy Hirschman, Sherman County, Tom Bander, the Village of Ashton, Fritz Frederick, City of Burville, John Christian, Village of Cushing, I don't even know where the hell Cushing is. The Village of Zeller. Lou Hagerty, Village of Elyria, Tara Dunbar, City of Loop City, Alexander Bailey. Alexander Bailey is a member from Loop City, and he is also on the, on the insurance board that we have, and so, that's nice to have a representative. He is a retired insurance gentleman, so he does know insurance, and it's nice to have that representation on. He is a retired insurance gentleman, so he does know insurance, and it's nice to have that representation on there. Greeley County is Dennis Wathworth, Loop County is David Larson, Village of Arcadia is Dale Pedro, Village of Bullis, Paul Danilevich, Village of Comstock, David Rhodes, Village of Elba, Dakota Woloski, Village of Greeley is Terry Wood, Village of North Loop is Darryl Jorgensen, Village of Palmer, Mickey Davis, City of St. Paul is Katie Kowalski, Village of Scotia, Rick Block, Village of Teter, Buck Moon, Village of Brockville, A.J. Reimers, City of Sergeant, Nick O'Jules, Village of Spalding, Ed Carlin, and Village of Wallback, Roger Lucas Evans. So as part of a number of communities that are involved in that, and what you do need to know too is that not all these people show up to meetings. There is usually about, you know, ten or twelve of us, and it's the same ones all the time. And, and that's perfectly fine, but they're all welcome. And they're, you know, they, they know what to do, they all get notices, but not everyone cares about what they're, whatever happens with the solid waste. I actually do care about it and I'm glad we're involved in that.
Mick, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay, so the landfill makes money, right?
Yes.
Pretty substantial money?
Yes.
Do you think it has ever come up that maybe the rates that the towns get charged for things could go down because of the millions of dollars that the landfill makes?
We have that, cheapest we could possibly, it went from, whatever it was you started to about a, a, yeah. Isn't a dollar a person now?
I don't, I don't know, but I will say that when I first started in oh-nine, our, we have to pay an assessment to the Loop thing. It was four thousand, and now it's under five hundred that we pay a year.
But I mean, even like the roll-off, 'cause that's theirs, right?
No.
No, no, no.
Who's the roll-off?
That was Jane, Jane.
Okay, well, never mind.
You have to wait for that contract to come up by another year.
Yeah. Never mind, it's my bad.
And that, you know, there, there are some things in the wind that, that we're not really positive about, we are working on. And one of them is tire reformation. That'll be a big deal if we can get that to go. Is there a bazillion tires?
They're at your place, aren't they?
One floor, definitely. And there are, what we, what we're working on is trying to get somewhere to go with the product.
All right, well, thank you.
And so, and if in fact that goes, and it'll be down with the road a few years, but there'll be dividends paid because that's gonna be when they make the deal.
Thank you.
But anyway, that's, our, our tenantage is a little down because of the, again, the JBS people that run the packing industry in Grand Island. They're just not doing as many animals they can take care of themselves. And they were doing more animals and they had an excess, and that was, believe it or not, really nice stuff to have. It was wet and it would, yeah, I know, Nick, you know what it is. And, and it would soak up the dirt and the papers and it's a little smelly, but it's really good packing material.
Well, we could put ours in our dumpster and soak up the paper in ours. We'll talk about that during our meeting tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Cushion south of Wallback.
South of Wallback?
Yeah.
Okay.
Northeast of St. Paul.
Okay.
Yep.
Any citizen comments?
Did he have a, did you have something to say about the airport?
I don't know if it's a question or request, does the city office run the website, city website?
Not really, no.
We know who runs it.
Adam Grebel runs it.
So that's not through the city or anything? It just, it has, like, the city council meeting, one place it has it Monday, one place it has it Tuesday, it has people who are, or have a high tower around.
Oh, well, I have asked Adam to change that, and sometime, I mean, he has another job that he does, so I will remind him again, okay?
Yep.
Maybe that's something we need to?
It's just pretty outdated.
Localize.
The meeting minutes sometime will get loaded for two or three months.
Okay, so.
Well, I'll send him an email and ask to change.
Well, maybe we need to see about having somebody else here do it.
Cause we're paying for it, I guess.
The city doesn't do it completely by itself, it's a city in a chamber thing, so yeah, whatever everybody wants to do.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have to, you just have to tell him what needs updated, he doesn't need to do it, so we gotta tell him.
Okay.
We pay Adam five hundred bucks and the chamber pays him five hundred?
Just his question.
Can he answer?
Yeah, he asked it.
The city pays five hundred bucks and the chamber pays five hundred, so.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying, I'm assuming we're paying for service, we're not really getting.
We'll look into it, thank you. Brandy, did you wanna talk about the airport?
Yeah, there's some good stuff happening out there. Greg Cooper from Mason City Enterprises has an airplane out there. And there's a instructor, whole scalp, he's giving flying lessons now, he's got two or three students. The last I heard, and I, that was a couple of days ago, there's gonna be another airplane, it was supposed to be today, I never got informed yet that it's here, but it was coming in, the ostriches on it, I guess they're out of Ansley. And that was supposed to be here today. And then around the first of October, there's gonna be one more airplane in. And that, that airplane will go in the maintenance hangar. Cause we're running out of room, but he requires heat, and that's the only hangar we have that's heated, is the maintenance hangar. And we're working on getting heat to the main hangar, which is where these other airplanes are. And once we get that, then that'll up all the rent for everybody. And we're working on getting some pavement put in that's broke up. And, oh, there's a couple holes in the roof of, a couple of the hangars, we have a person coming out to look at that and patch them. But the big thing is getting the airplanes that are coming in and the airport's getting some notice now.
So with them extra airplane, I think Tim maybe said, if we get to like ten or eleven out there, we're qualified for something?
If we get ten aircraft at the airport, the airport is eligible for federal funding, and the last I heard, it was a hundred thousand dollars a year.
So they will put us up to how many planes?
Well, there's four now, by October, we should have two more, that'd be six. So we're, we're working on it.
Awesome.
The last meeting we had, we had four pilots there.
Yeah, the pilots are coming to the meeting.
They're coming to the meeting, make sure they want.
That's good, they can't be on the board, but they could be advisors.
Right.
And so we, I take pages of notes and I'm trying to work on it. And at the last meeting, I was elected president of the Airport Authority Board, and Tim was elected vice president of the board. And together, we're just trying to get it together and make it happen.
Thanks, guys.
Good job.
It's awesome, really appreciate it. Anybody else have any comments?
Um, we're working on the survey, surveys, I guess, or that, the E cap process.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And so hopefully, we have a meeting Thursday night and to finish, hopefully, going through the survey so that it can go out to everyone. So we just, I think the steering committee is working on trying to make sure the best ways to, but how to inform everyone in town to make sure we get everybody to fill out the surveys and to attend the meetings, so. But there will be an alumni survey, a youth survey, and then one for the community at large, so.
It was a great meeting.
Yeah.
And there was a wide variety of people and it was well represented, so that was really positive to see, it was awesome. Anybody else?
Mary with Kiella, does Kiella have anything for us? No?
We're working on budgets, maybe with you guys.
Are we full?
Yes, we're full, we have one moving out and we have waiting lists, so.
How long is your waiting list?
You guys should get on the waiting list now.
How long, how many's on your waiting list?
Three.
We put Jerry on it before.
I wanna get ahead of the game a little bit.
Thank you.
One of the things on the steering committee was getting information out to everybody, so we talked about the website, putting stuff on the calendar, and then if it was important, be, having it be on that front page of the webpage. Connecting the school website and the, like, their, the page that you get on to see what the calendar and what your kids are doing and homework and stuff. And then there would be another spot on there where you could go to the city web spot, webpage and see what was going on with the city. Uh, we talked about a couple of different apps, there's an app called Remind that we really wasn't for sure about. And then there is an app called Text My Gov, which could be interactive. It would be one thousand five hundred dollars a year would be that fee. And then, say there was a, say Cash found a dog and he could text that app, that app and say, there's a dog at loose on certain place, and then it would go to?
Where's my kid?
Where's?
Have you seen Zison?
Where's Zison, he was on his bike.
Yeah, so, um, that, I mean, we've talked about, Jerry has mentioned Text My Gov to me before. There are a few towns around here that use it. I didn't get the one clerk contacted today, but that's what it would be, it'd be a hundred, one thousand five hundred. And it would also be, um, the water leak, you know, there's, you know, the guys are flushing, the guys, your electricity will be off on Anna Street. We used to get code red. Does anybody else get any code red alerts like we used to years ago? So I don't, and I don't get them anymore, so I don't know if that would be something we'd want to, if we decided to go with this Text My Gov, that we could put some code red.
What's that mean?
Code red? No, code red is storms.
Oh.
Weather alert, yeah, and we used?
I get alerts.
Used to get them, but I don't hear them anymore either.
Mine are all from? Costa County.
Yeah, so.
Anything else?
One more thing too, we got the GIS done, town, got it done a week ago, two weeks ago. So it's all done, you'll have to come back and do some corrections here and there, but everything's marked out, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
You run out of blue paint?
No, I think, they'll make more.
They make it every day.
I don't paint them here as bad as Jason does, my god, he goes crazy.
Well, three years, now you're fine with it. That's right, you got GIS now.
Anybody to adjourn?
I move.
Second?
I second too.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Cause Mark and I are skipping on a town Thursday night and Friday and Saturday. So if we could do this Monday?
That'd be fantastic, I just wanna get it moving for them, we need to look at that and make a decision for them, if we've already put them on the roadmap.
And I did not know that you guys had to take a look at the application.
Well, I would've guessed that it was.
I think the important thing is that every, we should have all of the information, it's too good to just say yes. It's yes, cause we want this to be finished, but it's still, it does affect everybody else too, so I think we should read it, and then he said, well, I don't know, you know.
Well, I don't want Cook saying it early, but.
I mean, that was my opinion too, I didn't, I know that everybody needs to see.
No, 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 I don't think everyone needs to read it, just like if they applied for a business loan, not that, I mean, for us to be able to say, yes, we read it and it's okay, you know, we're comfortable with it, instead of them like, what did you, you read the contract? And we're like, no, we're just going with it.
No, but what you say is like, have it here, like, that, she needs to get it to us so we can all see it.
Oh, yeah, ahead of time.
And not have it present.
I will get it.
No, 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 that's a great idea.
I will get it to you tomorrow.
Cause if it's present, it's.
No, you're right, that I agree with.